Evening, everyone, and welcome to 2022. It's Wednesday, January 5th, and this is our reorganization meeting. Due to the pandemic, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via livestream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the livestream is posted on the commissioner website. The public is able to participate by providing public comment via phone. To all participants in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. We will...
Take your role?
Yes, Mr. President. Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Gill.
No, Cooper is here.
Commissioner Cooper is marked here. Commissioner Gill, absent.
He's here.
Commissioner Gill is here.
Oh, I see. You know what? I didn't see you on earlier, Commissioner Gill. I apologize. Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Luciano?
Here.
Commissioner Mercado?
Here.
Commissioner Palmares?
Here.
Commissioner Sebel?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll have the National Anthem. We will now have Reverend Maria Crumpton of Elmwood Presbyterian to lead us in the opening prayer.
Good evening. It is an honor to be asked to open your meeting with prayer. So let us pray. God, we are thankful tonight for a new day, a new year, a new season. We are thankful for your hand of protection and provision that guided us through 2021. And we are thankful that that same hand will be upon us in 2022. Now, God, as we begin this meeting, we pray for our new commissioners, their loved ones, their families. We ask, oh, God, that you grant them wisdom, compassion, and the ability to work together for the good of the people. Now, God, we invite your Spirit into this place. The agenda may be set, but we want you to have your way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. And at this point, I will turn the meeting over to the clerk for the election of officers. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is nomination and election of the president. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of President of the Board for 2022. Commissioner Sebel.
You're on mute, Commissioner.
Sorry. It is with great pleasure that I am happy to nominate Wayne Richardson as the President of the Essex County Board of Commissioners. President Richardson has done an outstanding job this past year, and I'm looking forward to the great job he will do in the coming year. Wayne Richardson has an extensive background working with all the constituents in Essex County. He is President of Labor's Local 55, a residential construction union. He is the lead organizer representing an area that includes New Jersey, Delaware, New York City, and Long Island. His vast knowledge in so many other areas makes him well-prepared to be the President of this board. Wayne Richardson always cares about what matters to the residents he represents. He brings a very diverse experience to the county government, and that is why I consider it an honor to nominate Wayne Richardson as President of the Essex County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebel. Commissioners, do I hear a second on the nomination of Commissioner Richardson as President? Commissioner Johnson? You're on mute?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening to everyone that's viewing us on livestream and on social media. I am Commissioner-at-large Rufus Johnson, and it is my distinct honor to second the nomination of my friend and colleague, Commissioner Wayne Richardson, for another year as the President of the Essex County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioners, are there any additional nominations for President? Seeing that there are no further nominations for the position of President, Commissioners, do I have a motion to close the nominations?
I'll move it.
Do I hear a second to close the nomination? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. The nominations are closed. Okay, Commissioners, now we will vote on the nomination of Commissioner Richardson as President. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
So moved. Commissioner Richardson, President of the Board of Commissioners, congratulations to you. At this point...
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Oh, you're quite welcome. At this point, I will ask Judge James Paganelli to administer the Oath of Office to Commissioner President Richardson.
Ready, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I...
Aye.
Wayne Richardson. solemnly swear...
solemnly swear.
Or affirm...
I swear.
Or affirm that I will support...
Affirm.
That I will support...
I will support...
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I will bear true faith...
I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the same...
To the same...
And to the governments...
And to the governments...
Established...
Established...
In the United States...
In the United States...
And in this state.
And in this state.
I state your name.
I, Wayne Richardson.
Having been duly elected...
Having been duly elected...
President of the Board of County Commissioners.
President of the Board of County Commissioners.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
Do solemnly promise...
To solemnly promise...
And swear...
And swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties...
Of President of the Board of County Commissioners.
Of President of the Board of County Commissioners.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities...
And understanding...
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues.
Congratulations again, Mr. President. Would you like me to continue?
Yes, please.
Now, we're moving to the nomination and election of Vice President. Commissioners, I will entertain the nomination for the position of Vice President of the Board for 2022. Commissioner Mercado? Please make sure you're unmuted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and good evening to everyone viewing tonight's ceremony. It's my distinct honor to nominate my friend, Mayano, Commissioner Vice President Carlos Palmares on the Board of Commissioners for 2022. Commissioner Vice President has distinguished himself as a leader, and he has a strong track record of service and support on many issues. His interests and values are centered around community service, and he is guided by his reference to history and the importance of history in our future. He has continued this last year to represent the Board and along with our President Richardson and to... Excuse me. I'm sorry. And he continued to represent the Board along with President Richardson this last year. It is also, he has been a staunch supporter of the Essex County Historical Society. He's a founder of the Bloomfield Cruisers, a nonprofit automobile organization. Commissioner Vice President is a fixture in our Essex County food distribution events. He is involved with the local police department, and he proudly represents this District 5 on the Board. It is my distinct honor to nominate my friend and wholeheartedly endorse him for another year as Vice President on the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Commissioners, do I hear a second on the nomination of Commissioner Palmares as Vice President? Commissioner Luciano?
Good evening, all. Happy New Year. Happy and healthy. I would like to second the nomination of Commissioner Vice President Carlos Palmares. Carlos has served as the District 5 Commissioner and formerly known as Freeholder. With honor and distinction, he is an excellent family man who has done wonderful things for his wife and children, but also makes sure that he dedicates his time to the constituents of Essex County, in particular District 5, which is made up of Glen Ridge, Bloomfield, Belleville, and Montclair. I, tonight, would like to second the nomination for Carlos to return as our Vice President. I think that he has done not just a wonderful job with his commitment to the constituents, but he has also made sure that he's used his personal social media to allow all the residents and all of his followers in Essex County to know what Essex County, under the leadership of our county executive, our President Wayne Richardson and our Board, does to keep our residents safe, keep our residents fed, and keep them informed as to the day-in-day operations that we run here in Essex County. So I would like to, again, concur with Commissioner Bob Mercado in saying that Carlos Palmares is an excellent choice for our Vice President, and he should continue. And so I second that nomination, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Commissioner Luciano. Are there any other additional nominations for Vice President? Seeing that there are no further nominations for the position of Vice President, Commissioners, do I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Do I have a second to close the nominations?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the nominations for Vice President signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so moved, and the nominations are closed. So we will now have a vote on the nomination of Commissioner Palmares for Vice President. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
But so moved. Congratulations, Vice President Palmares. So, at this point, I will ask Judge James Paganelli to administer the Oath of Office to Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Commissioner, please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Carlos Palmares.
Solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
I state your name.
I, Carlos Palmaras.
Having been elected.
Having been duly elected.
Vice President of the Board of County Commissioners.
Vice President of the Board of County Commissioners.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
Solemnly promise.
Do solemnly promise.
And swear.
And swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of Vice President of the Board of County Commissioners.
Perform all the duties as Vice President of the Board of County Commissioners.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
In and for the State of New Jersey.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Vice President.
Thank you, Judge.
Again, congratulations. Mr. President, I turn the meeting over to you.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'd like to invite our Governor Phil Murphy to offer some remarks. Governor.
Thank you, Wayne. Congratulations to you and Carlos. Well done. Deborah left me off the roll calls, but I want you to know that I voted for both of you. And to you too and your fellow commissioners, it's an honor to be with you. I salute your leadership to County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. I have enormous gratitude and thanks for his leadership. Chairman Leroy Jones, always great to see you and thank you for your outstanding leadership, not just in Essex County, but around the state. They couldn't have a better fighter for us in Congress than Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill. An honor to be with you, Mikey. And to all the elected officials, senior staff members, and citizens of Essex County with us today, thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes. I won't take long, and I apologize, I'll have to duck out a little bit early, but a couple of comments I wanted to make. First of all, Happy New Year. Secondly, in so many respects, it continues to be the case that as Essex County goes, so goes New Jersey. Whether that's our leapfrog from four years ago, forty-seventh in the nation in economic growth, the last quarter number four in the country, the heart and soul of that economic growth begins in Essex County. And by the way, I'm speaking to you from the Brook City, Newark, New Jersey. Whether it is politics very selfishly, I'm not sitting here as the first re-elected Democratic governor in forty-four years without Essex County. So for that, I'm thankful. And tragically and sadly, we battled this pandemic together, and no county under Joe's leadership has been more aggressive, more professional, more thorough in the way that it has battled this awful pandemic in Essex County. In fact, it was in East Orange on Friday with Maya Loto and others, Ted Green, obviously, opening up a federally sponsored testing site. Not a coincidence that that was in Essex County. It's just the most recent example. On the note of the pandemic, so for politics, I'm extraordinarily thankful, beginning with Leroy. On the pandemic and all of the other in-government work we do together, I thank Joe profusely and and the great leadership of the County Commissioners, beginning with Wayne and Carlos and the whole team. On the pandemic specifically, we're getting there. This is still awful. It's so contagious. It's just, it takes epidemiologists' breath away how contagious it is. My wife got it. She did everything right. So it is going up in a straight line. There's two pieces of good news, one I know and one I speculate, but I think it's also a piece of good news. The one I know is that while it is a lot more contagious, unlike anything we've ever been around, it is quite clear that if you're vaccinated and boosted, it is less lethal. And so it's not fun getting it, but if you're doing the right thing, especially if you're boosted, you should be okay. And then, secondly, if you look at other places where this thing has been going up, shooting straight up, we are, I hope, I hope this is right, within a matter of some number of days, when this thing peaks and starts to come down in terms of cases. Please, God, that's the case. We've lost too many lives, now almost thirty thousand losses of life in New Jersey, which is unfathomable, and Essex County has paid an enormous toll within that context. We're going to get through this, and we have a lot of excitement before us. I'm incredibly excited to put my hand on the Bible. Wayne and Carlos gave me some good pointers tonight. I'll be doing that a week from Tuesday. Still not sure exactly what that looks like, given the pandemic, but I know my hand will be on the Bible a week from Tuesday. I can't tell you how excited I am for our second term. And I say our second term, Essex County's own, my incredible partner in government, Sheila Y. Oliver, is our Lieutenant Governor. And we have so much before us, so much to do together. And as I said, in so many respects, New Jersey's success, whether it's economic health, public health, societal strength, addressing the inequities that have persisted for far too long, whatever the endeavor might be in our state, it begins and ends with Essex County. So for your partnership, folks, from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you. Happy New Year. Thank you for allowing me to be with you for these few moments tonight. God bless. Wayne, back over to you.
Thank you, Governor. Really appreciate you being here, and congrats on your reelection, for sure. At this point, I'd like to invite Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill to say a few words. Congresswoman?
Thank you so much. I want to take the opportunity first to say Happy New Year to everyone. Many of you are probably like me and glad to see 2021 in the rearview mirror, but it's wonderful to be with you tonight. Governor, I hope the First Lady is doing okay. Our prayers are with her. But thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight for this swearing-in. Beginning the year with these swearing-in ceremonies always inspires me and reminds me of my own commitment to serve. And I have to tell you, Joe, here I am, I have three other swearing-ins I'm going to tonight, but I am putting Essex County first. This is my first one, but wonderful to see everybody. These past couple of years have been trying for everybody. As we've navigated this, the pandemic has presented new and really some devastating problems, and governing has never been more difficult, especially for our state and local government officials who are responsible for solving really the most critical concerns that our constituents face. So I just want to take a minute right now to thank Governor Murphy, County Executive Joe DiVincenzo, Chairman Jones, and the entire Board of Commissioners here in Essex County, Wayne, Carlos, Pat, Brendan, Rufus, Romaine, Robert, Tashemi, and Lenny. I see you guys everywhere. I see you at the Essex County food drives. I see you at the vaccination sites. I just your support and thoughtfulness for everyone in Essex County has been not only touching to me personally, but also just created a huge impact here in the county. So I look forward to working together with all of you over the coming years. I next want to thank and congratulate Wayne for being sworn in today as Commissioner President, Carlos as Vice President. Best of luck in the coming year to both of you and to the entire Board of Commissioners. Throughout the public health crisis, we've really seen our leaders rise to the occasion time and again. And as we continue to rebuild from the pandemic, I know the people of Essex County can and will count on all of you for your leadership. You've done really incredible work since the start of the pandemic. I really continue to be so impressed. So I want to just thank you again. Congratulations again. Wonderful to see everyone. Please stay safe and take care, and I'm sure we'll talk soon. So thanks again.
Thank you so much, Congresswoman. Now I'd like to offer the County Exec some time to speak. Mr. Joe DiVincenzo.
Thank you, Wayne. First of all, I want to congratulate all the Commissioners on your reelection, and especially to you, Wayne, and to Carlos, the last three years, it's been a pleasure working with you. You know, everything that it's been accomplishing the last twenty years, you know, it's been a total team effort, working together as a team along with our thirty-five hundred county employees. And everything that's been accomplished is because of what we've done together, whether it was improving our parks, whether it's for our infrastructure, whether it's just providing services and rebuilding this county. Wayne and Carlos, you did a tremendous job, and we're going to continue moving together as a team, just like we did when Brendan was the President and Pat was the Vice President. You guys do a great job. You do a great job. But, you know, we only could do so much. You have to have the people in the right position. And to Governor Murphy, first of all, I want to congratulate you, you know, on your election to be the first one in forty-four years as a Democrat to be reelected. That speaks for itself. In a very, very difficult year, all right, you won, and you deserve to win reelection. What you have done through the pandemic here in the state of New Jersey speaks for itself. You and your team, it's been a pleasure working with you. You've done a sensational job. And what you've done for us here in Essex County, the things that we've done could not have been done without your support and your leadership. Everything you said you were going to do for us, you kept your word, you kept your commitment, not only to us here in Essex, but to people in the state of New Jersey. So I know the next four years is going to be very, very exciting, and thank you for all your support. To Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, Congressman Payne, Congresswoman Abilio Series, Mikey's on the thing. Mikey has been a great friend to us here in Essex County, just like the other two congresspeople. Listen, the things that we're doing could not have been done without their support. You know, their job is to go out and bring the funds in here so that we can do our job, and whether it was Cares money, money, or the American Recovery money, or this infrastructure, Essex County is benefit, and that's what you need. You need the people to be able to fight for you. And Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill has done a tremendous job in doing that, and I just want to thank her for her support and continue to support. And to my brother Leroy Jones, you know, Leroy Jones serves as the State Chairman, and he's done a great job. Listen, the governor got reelected, we still have control in the Senate, we still have control in the Assembly, and it was not an easy election to be able to, there were so many unknowns, but Leroy had to work through that. Leroy not only put Essex County together, but he put the state of New Jersey, and he brought people together, which we all knew he was going to do. But Leroy, you have done a tremendous job. You know, everybody that's on this line has done a great job, but the leader speaks for itself, Leroy, and we know what you have done here and continue to do. I don't know how you do it, but you've done a great job, and I'm here to, whatever you need, for continue to support you, Leroy, and as strong you are, the stronger we all are. Thank you.
Thank you, County Exec. Appreciate you. And now I'd like to invite our Essex County and State Democratic Chairman Leroy Jones to offer some remarks.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and, you know, Vice President Palmeras and members of the Board of Commissioners. You know, also, you know, to Reverend Clergy, you know, to, you know, the Honorable, you know, Judge Paganelli, you know, to, you know, Governor Murphy, who has, you know, been, you know, that amazing and incredible leader, you know, for the state. You know, congratulations on, you know, your, you know, reelection. You know, it's, you know, been, you know, nothing short of stellar. You know, and, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with you, not just as, you know, the State Chair, but, you know, you and I, you know, have, you know, had a, you know, long relationship, you know, from, you know, that date back, you know, much further than that. You know, and, you know, it's going to be a pleasure, you know, working with you, you know, through this, you know, second term, you know, as we, you know, continue to, you know, move through, you know, unknown and unforeseen territory, you know, pandemic being number one, you know, with so many other issues to tackle. To Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, who, you know, leads us with distinction in, you know, the Halld Hall of Congress, you know, she has been, you know, that shining example of leadership, you know, of, you know, bold, daring, and different, you know, leadership, you know, in the House of Representatives, along with, you know, Congressman Payne and, you know, Congressman Series, who, you know, we thank him for his leadership as he closes out his tenure, you know, in, you know, in government and certainly in Congress. You know, to my friend, my brother, you know, Joe DiVincenzo, the Essex County Executive, who has, you know, been, you know, that, you know, quintessential, you know, spokesperson for, you know, those of us who are, you know, in this county that, you know, he continues to try to make us safer, you know, try to keep us healthy. You know, he has been nothing short of magnificent, you know, in his leadership, you know, in his willingness and putting in his time, you know, even, you know, facing, you know, the perils of, you know, of the pandemic, you know, himself. You know, but, you know, he continues to, you know, move forward. He continues to put Essex County first. He continues to put people first. And he's done that, you know, with, you know, distinction. You know, he's done it, you know, with, you know, a selfless effort that, you know, is second to none, you know, in this state of New Jersey. There's no better, you know, County Executive. There's no more committed County Executive. You know, and there's no more, you know, sensitive leader, you know, to the people of, you know, his county, you know, than my friend and our friend, you know, Joe DiVincenzo. You know, our hats go off to him. You know, he has been, you know, just, you know, as I said, nothing short of magnificent. You know, and, you know, to the members of, you know, his administration and the members of, you know, the Board of, you know, Commissioners, you know, staff, you know, you know, all of you have, you know, been, you know, those shining examples of, you know, leadership, you know, taking, you know, charge, you know, being part and parcel, you know, of, you know, vaccine administration, you know, testing, food distribution. You know, our hats go off to each and every one of you, you know, for, you know, your commitment to this county. But, you know, to the, you know, to the people of the hour, you know, President Richardson, you know, Wayne, you know, since that one day that, you know, you and I stood out back of the campaign headquarters and talked about, you know, your, you know, yearning to be part and parcel of, you know, public service. You know, from that day on, you know, you have, you know, been nothing but, you know, that, you know, that leader, you know, that person that, you know, cares and, and, you know, gives his all, whether it's, you know, to, you know, the men and women of organized labor, the constituents of this county of Essex that we, you know, also love. You know, that has been, you know, a, you know, a monumental, you know, quest for me to understand, you know, the commitment of a person. And when you have a partner, you know, like Carlos Palmeras, who, you know, just by, you know, virtue of his own background, you know, coming from, you know, parents, you know, having to, you know, to leave, you know, a, you know, a country like Cuba, you know, to come here, you know, to exercise, you know, the freedoms that this, you know, this country offers. You know, and, you know, he uses that as an example to motivate himself, his family, and the people, you know, that he serves, you know, whether it be in Bloomfield as a councilman, you know, as in Essex County as a Commissioner, but more importantly, you know, as a, you know, genuine human spirit that, you know, moves all of us and illuminates, you know, the lives of all of us. So, you know, to both of you on this day of leadership, you know, congratulations to each and every one of you. You know, and, you know, to what makes up this entire board, you know, Commissioner Cooper, Commissioner Gill, Commissioner Graham, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Luciano, Commissioner Mercado, and Commissioner Sebel. Each and every one of you clearly understand that no man or woman is greater than the people he or she serves. And, you know, you guys have put the needs of people, you know, before the needs of each one of you. But collectively, each one of you have been a cascade of humanity, and that's something. And that's something, you know, that, you know, each of you can be truly proud of because the spirit of service, you know, is, you know, within all of you. And when that spirit of service is in you, then, you know, that touches, you know, the 800,000 people that you all collectively represent. My hat goes off to each one of you. I am so proud to be part and parcel of, you know, the political side of this with you. And, you know, when we have an opportunity to discuss the governmental issues, you know, all of you have, you know, just distinguished yourself in such a special way. So, you know, to the members of the public that are on today, you know, please know that, you know, you have a special set of leaders, you know, from the county executive to the members of the, you know, Board of Commissioners, to the members of the administration who give their all, and I know that personally because I watch it in my own home. And, you know, all of those that are part and parcel of what we call the county of Essex. God bless you all, and thank you for the, for what you do for people in this county, but also, you know, thank you do what you do for humanity. It is certainly second to none, you know, in this country that we call the United States of America. God bless you all.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Appreciate all those kind words, and, you know, we look forward to continue to make you proud.
Thank you, Wayne.
So, good evening, everyone, and greetings again to Governor Murphy, Congresswoman Sherrill, our chairman Leroy Jones, and our county exec Joe DiVincenzo, and all the county employees. To my fellow commissioners, the clerk Deborah Davis Ford, the deputy clerk Deborah Marvel, and all the staff in the commissioner's office, thank you for supporting my leadership. I couldn't do it without you. I also want to acknowledge the 20-plus mayors of Essex County, the second most populous county in New Jersey. Thank you to everyone who has taken the time to be with us this evening. 2021 tricked us. 2021 allowed us to come up for air just to get hit with an unexpected wave that we didn't see coming. It meant masking up again and trying to convince family and friends to get vaccinated. It meant doubling down on testing and continuing to help our neighbors who continue to suffer from food insecurity. In response to the escalation of COVID, the Essex County Board, along with the administration, did an amazing job serving the residents of Essex County. The testing and vaccination programs organized and executed by the Essex County Administration serve as a national model. The efficiency in organizations were and are exemplary. When I talk to friends or relatives in other parts of the country about testing and vaccination availability, they are amazed at the operation we have here in Essex County and the way we serve our residents. We also apply the expansion and modernization of Turtleback Zoo and the opening of the MLK Justice Building. Despite the hardships of 2021, the Essex County Board of Commissioners addressed some difficult issues. We responded to sometimes controversial constituent concerns. We continued time-honored traditions, and we embraced new and timely issues. Through various resolutions, we stood against all forms of bigotry, racial, ethnic, and religious and acts of violence due to sexual identity. Among the controversial issues was the depopulation of the ICE detainees from the Essex County Correctional Facility. In conversations with constituents concerned with deer calling on our reservations, we met with visually impaired residents to find out how we can better serve them and their needs at crosswalks. We brought back the Weekway Park House Music Festival. We continued our tradition of publicly honoring accomplished Essex County residents and various ethnicities and cultures at our monthly programs. For the first time, we joined with governmental entities all over the world. We lit the Hall of Records in orange lights in early December in recognition of International Day of the Elimination of Violence Against Women. So as we enter in 2022 amid a pandemic, we thought would be over by now, but it's not. So let's continue to do what we can to keep ourselves, our families, and our neighbors safe. We have learned that vaccines are the best defense, and we encourage everyone to get protected. On behalf of the entire board, I wish you safe, prosperous, and an enjoyable year, and God bless you, and Godspeed. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to invite my good friend and colleague, Vice President Palmeiras, to offer his remarks. Commissioner Vice President Palmeiras, glory to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to my fellow commissioners and Governor Murphy, Congresswoman Sherrill, county executive Joe DiVincenzo, Judge Paganelli, our constitutional officers, elected officials, commissioner staff, we can't forget them, of course, who put all this together. And to those who are watching via live stream, good evening and happy 2022. It is with great humility that I accept the responsibility to serve once again as Vice President of the Board for this year. To my commissioner colleagues, the opportunity to represent our communities is an honor we have all embraced, and I've learned a great deal from working with each and every one of you. The lessons have made me a better legislator, more importantly, a better person, and I thank all of you for helping me develop and grow as a person and as a public servant. Commissioners Mercado, Luciano, thank you so much for your kind words and nomination earlier today. It means the world to me. I know you both speak with genuine heart, and that's what matters most, saying all those kind things, and much appreciated. To our president, Mr. Richardson, congratulations and best wishes for another successful term leading this board. You've been a great leader and a friend, and I'm most grateful to serve with you. You have the gift of inclusion, making everyone feel valuable and welcoming of their input. It's been a pleasure to serve alongside of you as Vice President over the last year, and I look forward to continuing our working relationship and assisting you in any way I can. You've read a long list of accomplishments this board has done, and we're very proud of that. But I know the first person to say we have a lot more to do would be you, so we're here to serve and to support. Governor Murphy, thank you for taking part in tonight's ceremony, and thank you for leading the entire state through the COVID pandemic, through your recent, through also through the tragic natural disasters and through a certain time of uncertainty. Your outstanding leadership and actions speak volumes about your genuine concern for others. At a critical time, you provided critical leadership. Thank you. And also, thank you for the Essex Hudson Greenway. I'm sure Brendan Gill and I and the rest are very excited about that as well. We were very enthusiastic, and we appreciate your critical support of that project. To Congresswoman Sherrill, thank you for the stellar leadership and representation, especially with significant projects such as the Gateway. It is an honor to collaborate with one of the rising stars in Congress, and also a pleasure for me to represent you as your district commissioner. It's a real honor to constantly work with you, always available for any assistance we may need. Chairman Jones, thank you for your friendship and encouragement and belief throughout the years. I appreciate the kind words you shared earlier. As you know, yes, I do wear the family immigration experience that my family had very prominently because I think it's a similar experience for many others on a high level, and it is a great motivation for service. To our county executive, Joe DiVincenzo, also known to most people as Mr. Essex County, thank you for your outstanding leadership through almost 20 years now. During the last two years in particular, the pandemic has provided its own set of unique challenges. Sadly, we've experienced more COVID-related deaths in Essex County than any other county in New Jersey, and that number would have been significantly higher if it wasn't for your leadership and your hard work along with your team. Although times have been challenging, as Essex County leaders, we never waver. Together, we exhibited a collective determination to provide relief to our residents impacted by the pandemic while continuing to offer the services they are accustomed to receiving. Under your leadership, we established numerous COVID-19 vaccination and testing centers throughout the county, including mobile units well ahead of other institutions, and serving as a model for government entities nationwide. We provided our residents with much-needed relief in the form of weekly food distribution events, rental and mortgage assistance programs, small business grants, and so many others. This work in more exemplifies the value that I've learned at home and by reinforced by a network that I'm so fortunate to have. In fact, it is fitting that my alma mater, St. Peter's Prep in Jersey City, molds its young men to be a man for others. And if I may expand beyond the all-boys school arena, I would say that the men and women of Essex County government are true and genuine servants for others. Lastly, to my family, who are just on the other side of this screen, my beautiful wife Natasha, my children Carlitos, Felicita, Mario, to my sisters Carmen and Rebecca, to my Bloomfield community, to my good friend and legislative aide Louis Felix, my GNO crew, the entire network, thank you for your unconditional support and for serving with me and for the sacrifices you've all made in order for me to serve. In closing, today I'm reminded of our inauguration last year on January 6, 2021, the day our nation's capital was besieged. To say dampened the spirit of the day would be an understatement. Although democracy prevailed, that horrible day pushed our country to the limit. Among the many lessons of that day, let us be reminded that we are all one as Americans. Let us also be reminded of Abraham Lincoln's words. "America will never be destroyed from the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves." Abraham Lincoln knew a thing or two about division. And for those of us who inherit democracy from those who fought feverishly for it, we owe it to the previous generations to make our country better. We as leaders need to ensure that civility must prevail, and that the first and foremost of all, we are not Democrats, we are not Republicans or anything else, we are Americans. And we need to double down on our efforts to ensure a community for all, with civil debate to be respected and encouraged, and never allow for the division we have experienced. United, we shall continue to stand, and these efforts begin locally. Thank you for the trust you have placed in me. I look forward to 2022 and working diligently to serve and uplift the people and the communities of Essex County. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice President, and thank you for those kind words, and your leadership the last year has been exemplary. And, you know, I can't think of a better partner to have. You know, you always have my back. I got yours, and we make sure we consult one another, we converse and get things done. And so I look forward to that partnership and, you know, continuing this year. So thank you. All righty, Madam Clerk, at this point, we will continue with the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, Clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
If you are calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our public information officer will announce the caller so they can state their comment or question. Be reminded, you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop on or any electronic devices while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you will have an opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Chala Malumba, our public information officer, you can begin the session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chala Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We have one caller waiting to speak. It is Matt Dragon. Mr. Dragon, you have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Thank you. Matt Dragon, West Orange. I was calling on Resolution 7 on the canceling the student loan debt. I would like to thank Commissioner Richardson for sponsoring that resolution, and I would ask that you would all support it. It's a critical issue, and it has both racial and class-level aspects to it that affect a lot of our residents in the county. And I would ask that you would support the resolution and do everything that you can through your connections to push for a more equitable outcome than the current system allows for. And that you would also continue to push for any delays, even if they aren't willing to cancel it. Evidence has shown that they're subject to pressure, moving the restart back into May. And so continuing to push on delaying restarting payments is obviously a good stopgap measure, even if it's not fully canceled. My other question, or that wasn't a question, is on the, I know you went into executive session in the last meeting around the issues of violence at the Essex County Correctional Facility. And I would ask for an update. I understand that specifics about specific cases pending litigation cannot be discussed in the public forum, but I would ask as a resident that you share some sort of general update, ideally in your comment time this evening, but also, I guess, as a direct response to me that I can then share out elsewhere. So it just, any, any update on the issues with violence at the jail, the contract to provide an external look at those policies, and any changes to policy or the administration at the jail that's in place to hold folks accountable for what seems like a lack of accountability and leadership in that facility. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Thank you. Mr. President, we have no written correspondence for public comment at this time regarding agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions. Please read Resolution Number One.
Resolution One, Essex County Board of County Commissioner Bylaws.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Vice President Palmeiras. Commissioners, you have any questions or comments on Resolution Number One? Questions or comments? Here we go. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmeiras.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number Two. Please read it.
Resolution Two, Annual Schedule of Meetings Adoption.
Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Are there any questions or comments on Resolution Number Two? Here we go. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Vice President Palmeiras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number Three, and please read it into, please read it.
Resolution Number 3, Official Newspapers to Receive Public Notice, Designated the Star Ledger, North Jersey Papers, WRL Community Newspapers, and Local Talk Weekly Newspaper.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Gill. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 4. Please read it.
Resolution 4, Cash Management Plan, Designation of Depositors, 2022.
Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Cooper. Any questions or comments, Commissioner? Hearing now. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
It was moved by Graham and second by Cooper.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 5. Please read.
Resolution Number 5, Appointment of Commissioner Representatives to the New Jersey Association of Counties, NJAC, for 2022.
Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Vice President Palmares. The representatives for NJAC will be Commissioner Gill. Alternates will be Commissioner Johnson and then myself. Commissioners, any questions or comments on Resolution Number 5? Hearing now. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 6. Please read.
Resolution 6, 2022 Temporary Budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Mr. McInerney, questions or comments?
Mr. President and the Board, the temporary budget is a approximately three months' worth of appropriations required. Introduction and adoption of the 2022 budget. It's based on last year's budget, 26.25% of the appropriations from the prior 2021 budget, but also takes into consideration mandated expenses like debt service and insurance payments and the such. This is typical what we do every year, so I see no problem with this. We can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments on the temporary budget? Hearing now. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution Number 7, and I have a motion. Please read it.
Resolution Number 7, Resolution Calling on the Federal Government to Enact a Plan to Cancel All Student Loan Debt Sponsored by Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson, the second from Commissioner Gill, but I would ask all my colleagues, if we could just do this via acclamation, if everyone is in agreeance, I'd love to have all of your support.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would agree.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you so much. So, I'm going to make just some brief comments, and then we'll get to the roll call. You know, why I support this resolution urging the federal government to erase student loan debt. You know, we all encourage young people to go to college. You know, higher education has always been the key to upward mobility and the development of world-class thinkers. The problem is that it costs too much. One year of college costs more than most families make in a year. Students graduate burdened with enough debt to keep them poor and struggling despite having a college degree. Student debt is a national crisis that impacts poor and working-class youth all over this country, but disproportionately impacts Black and Brown youth, who have more loans and are less likely to secure those high-paying jobs. It is incumbent upon the federal government, one way or another, to ease this burden and give this generation of young adults a chance to experience financial security. So that's why I urge the federal government to really do something about it, and thank you so much for all of your support on this resolution. Are there any questions or comments, Commissioners?
It's a great resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo.
Thank you, President Richardson, on your leadership on this resolution. It's very important.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Do we have a mover in a second?
Oh, I thought we did. Yeah, Commissioner Johnson and a second from, excuse me? I thought we did that.
I'm saying you did call it, but.
You may have. I missed it.
Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner, second by Commissioner Gill.
Alright. Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you so much, colleagues. We really appreciate that support. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had an opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration. They also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk.
If you are calling in, be sure to press 0 to be placed in the queue during the meeting. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the caller so they can state their comment or question. We be reminded, you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer, please begin our second public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer. We do not have any callers waiting to speak.
Thank you. Mr. President, we do have one public comment email to us for non-agenda item. And this one was submitted by Kathy O'Leary of Pax Christie, New Jersey. Dear Commissioners, as you may recall, Pax Christie, New Jersey, was one of the many organizations that supported your decision to create an Oversight Task Force for the jail. Among other things, it was supposed to provide transparency. Yet, in the two years since its creation, there has not been a single report to the public. It is also unclear where and when this task force meets, other than a handful of public meetings. The minutes from these meetings have also proven to be elusive. Here are my questions. One, when and where does the task force meet? Two, what are the dates of the meetings over the last two years? Three, where are the minutes from these meetings posted? Four, if they're not posted, how does the public access them? Five, has the task force made any written reports to the Commissioners or to the County Executive? Six, if so, how does the public access those reports? Seven, why is a second task force necessary? Eight, will the second task force headed by the Ombuds Group meet in public? Nine, will minutes or notes or other documents from this second task force be made available to the public? If so, when? Ten, what is the most recent year for which Essex County Correctional Facility received accreditation from the American Correctional Association? Eleven, during that year, how much did Essex County pay to ACA for that service? Twelve, what is the current capacity in number of beds at the ECCF? Thirteen, how many of those beds are currently filled? Fourteen, where are the current COVID protocols for the jail published? Fifteen, are COVID vaccinations boosters a part of the intake process at the ECCF? Sixteen, is COVID testing part of the intake procedure at the ECCF? Sincerely, Kathy O'Leary, Pax Christie, New Jersey. Mr. President, that is the only email that we receive for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and as is our policy, we will be responding to those questions in writing. Make sure that it gets to the right people to respond.
Will do, Mr. President.
So, to close out the meeting this evening, Reverend Crompton will offer the benediction. Reverend Crompton.
God, we thank you for what our eyes have seen here, for what our ears have heard here, and for the work that we have done here. As we leave this meeting, we ask that you keep your hand upon us, that you bless the work of our hands, and that you continue to use us for such a time as this. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen and good night.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much, Reverend Crompton. So, before I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting, I would like to ask the members of the board who have been appointed to Commissioner committees to continue to do so until we approve the new committees for 2022. Thank you so much. Commissioners, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I want all to say that one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, take care. Be safe and be well, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you to our staff.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Carlos.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
See you, everybody. See you soon.
Take care.
Congratulations, everybody. Great job.